I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the Constitution, states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He changes to the agenda.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone interested in motioning?
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion makes in line.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Presentations, proclamations, acknowledgements, there are none. Public comments? Anyone? Consent agenda? Do you have any, do you buddy have anything they want to discuss or have consent?
I just want to say the mobile food unit thing looks awesome.
Yeah, it does.
Nice work.
I second that.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second. Second by Eric, all in favor? Aye. All right. I'm the general business. No, no public hearings. So yeah, I'm the general business. Audit the financial statements. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Matt May representing your audit firm, Oberton KBB. You've got two hard copies of the documents in front of you which represent the final product of the audit. Mitch is here, we'll get a presentation up on the wall so you can just follow along there. I think the main points will be there unless you've got a question that came up in reviewing the documents. Our job as your auditor is to come into the city at the end of each year and test, examine, and give an opinion on the financial statements that your team puts together. A little bit of a year transition for the finance here at the city. But our thanks to your new contract, the finance director Al Rollick, for his work as well as the new team that you have on site here. They were very helpful and worked together to get to the numbers that we're looking at tonight. We are giving an unmodified or clean opinion again this year on the numbers. It's the best we can give you and it means that the numbers we're going to look at in a little bit are a true accurate picture of your financial position and results of operations. We looked at internal control, which is the policies and procedures you have here at the city to ensure after financial reporting and safeguard the city's assets. Had two findings, same ones as last year. We have a small accounting staff so we don't get all the segregation without duties we like to see. And we did make a couple corrections to the books this year to make sure that they were accurate and when that happens we need to make it available. The final report I'm issuing is one on legal compliance. That's all the statutes out there regarding how you run the city, conflicts of interest, contracting and bidding, all of that good stuff, and no findings when it comes to that. So I think we're very good audit over the 2018 fiscal year. Two of the three reports are the best I can provide and you're aware of the two findings that we have. I think there's an opportunity to lessen the severity or eliminate both of those going forward as the city continues to grow and ensure and its finance staff and team will provide you updates on that in future years. What I'd like to do is take a look at some of the numbers briefly with you. I want to look at the general fund and then also look at your utility funds just to give you some perspective on how the year was for you. We're going to, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question on the previous slide. You know, at one point, and maybe it doesn't matter, but you know, we, and we know that we're growing and we know that that's just a variable of it, that is that considered an acceptable response year after year as, you know, communities are in our position? I mean, or does it just seem, I don't know, like it's the easy go-to thing? Could we be doing more? Should we be doing more? Or is it just like an accepted, you know?
I think that's, I think that's a great question. We have what's called a material weakness right now, which is the highest level. And that would be something that I think there's an opportunity to lessen the severity of the finding. There's different levels, material weakness is the highest, significant deficiency is the mid-level, and I would make it a goal in the city to get you down to a significant deficiency. Material weakness means that something could go awry that would be material and significant to the city, whether it be a misappropriation or an error on the numbers. We come in to test for those things, so you've got that safety net there, but we're evaluating you without us coming in and your team should be finding those on its own basically. So there's always going to be a cost benefit to that. When we're looking for a perfect environment, you're going to have four duties and four individuals in each of the different areas, so you're looking at a staff of at least four to make that happen. And it's going to be a cost benefit decision from you as a council on whether you think that third or that fourth individual's salary and benefits are worth the risk that you would have if you didn't have them. So we can certainly dig in a little bit deeper with you and help you make that evaluation. Your finance director, Al Rollick, has been in a lot of different environments and I would value his opinion. I think if we're there first and then if he comes up with a plan that you think is worthwhile, we'd be happy to give you our opinion.
Part of the reason for the signal we're trying to find is the sign, the material findings that address the segregation is we've been lower than that because of the fact that we didn't have the staff. So there's, if you don't have enough bodies, there's a lot of overlap, there's a greater degree of risk overall. Quite honestly, in the other material adjustments, we've also not had that in past years and the people at the end of the year, we had nobody in the position and not all the year-end stuff was necessarily done by the time we got here and so the things that normally would have been done that they had to request during lunchtime. So they had essentially touched on those.
Want to look at the general fund in the context of the budget. You as a council approve a budget each year for the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. It has the city hall activities of planning zoning, elections, administration, finance, public safety is in there as well, public works is in there, the streets department, all of them fall under the general fund. It's your main operating fund. You had a budget that was basically balanced. You were calling for $2.00 million in revenue, $2.00 in spending, a transfer out to some of your capital funds to pay for equipment and other needs of the city in the future, and basically a small surplus of $2,000 was your plan for the general fund. Actual performance was better than anticipated. Revenue came in about $2.3 million, which is 117,000 more than you had budgeted. We had some grand activity that we weren't aware of when we put the budget together a year and a half ago. The licenses and permits with some development were better than anticipated as well. The city did a nice job of keeping spending in check, about $84,000 under budget there. There was some savings in public works when it comes to salaries and benefits, and also in general government, both with professional services, legal engineering, but also that turnover or vacancies in the finance team contributed to that as well.
As well as the police officer position was budgeted, but not filled at all this year.
So the transfers were made as you had planned, so rather than a breakeven budget and breakeven performance for the year, you actually are able to build on your fund balance and actually improve the financial health of the general fund by $200,000. It took you to a fund balance at the end of the year of about a million and a half. And that shows you a value history of your fund balance. We can look at it in dollars, which I think there's value in. You can see the growth and some nice inflationary increases as the city has grown, the general fund budget has grown, but it's better to look at it as a percentage of spending. And that's the way your fund balance policy is set up. At the end of the year, you want to have 50% of this year's budget in fund balance. And if you do the math and that million, 480, you're actually about 75, 78%. So you're in a very healthy position in relation to your fund balance goals at the end of the year. The way you do that is you let the year run out and then town evaluates the performance of the fund and then comes back to you in a subsequent year to make recommendations to the capital fund which will be coming. So you're going to address that amount that's over and above. But all that being said, you're in a very healthy position in the general fund. It gives you a lot of options on the team with the financial.
That discussion that Matt made earlier will be having. That's the sweep we usually talk about. If you have any, if you have a bid by a year, you know, dollars above beyond that 50%, the council will have discretion to sweep those dollars to other funds where it might benefit the city.
I want to jump ahead to the water fund and the utility funds. And we're going to look at them a little bit different. The general fund is budget-based because really the priorities are what type of service are we going to provide and how are we going to pay for it? And that's what the budget is. And if you're on budget, that's the goal of that fund. Enterprise funds are a little bit differently as the name implies, if you run like a business. You are providing a service, but you're also providing it on a fee-for-service type basis. And the goal would be that you're charging enough to cover the cost of running the fund. And the way to look at that is whether you've got operating income as you feel or not. And we look at operating income a couple different ways. Because these are utility funds, most of your assets are literally in the ground. You have millions of dollars of assets in the ground and you depreciate those and they show up as an expense on the books. But that expense is not an expense that you're actually writing a check for, so it's not a cash flow expense. So we're showing operating income with depreciation according to our accounting rules in gray. But if you want a perspective on how the fund is cash flowing, I would look at the orange bar instead and that's going to give you a perspective on whether inflows are equalling outflows.
So if we look at revenue, you can see that that has increased significantly over the last couple of years, a little bit of a downturn in 2018 from the 2017 high. Now that's made up of a couple of things. One of them is the actual monthly and quarterly user fees that you charge for the actual water being pumped to everyone's homes or businesses. But also within that number is your hookup fees and your trunk fees and the development fees that go along with that. So this number is a little bit skewed in that you got that kind of factored in. But all that being said, the fund has performed quite well for you each of the last couple of years. If we look at that operating income without depreciation, last year was $885,000 of operating income. This year it fell off a little bit to $768,000. Now those sound like some very strong positive numbers and they are on the surface, but I want you to be aware that this fund has significant bonded debt and you've got obligations to pay that debt. And those obligations for this year were about $750,000 in principal and interest. So when we look at that $768,000 number, $750,000 of that went out the door to pay your bondholders immediately and that didn't leave a lot necessarily of excess to run the fund going forward. And we have a fund balance in this fund too, and you can look at it that way. Basically what's left over that's not tied up in the capital and the equipment and the infrastructure, that was about $160,000 bucks at the end of the year. And that's not a significant cushion. You know, we have a 50% fund balance in your general fund. If you had a similar policy here in the water fund, then you'd be in the $400,000, $500,000 range. And again, $150,000, $160,000 is about where you landed. So we understand the challenges in running this fund. You've got the debt service obligations. You need to be conscious of the rates and make sure that's a fair amount for your citizens and residents. For right now, this fund seems to be holding its own kind of treading water in this fund. And again, I would just encourage you to continue to watch that rate structure, work with administration and professional staff to make sure that the performance of this fund is adequate, not only to cover the cost of doing business, but also to service that debt that you've got obligations for going forward. Now the sewer fund is a little bit different story and this fund has got some fairly significant headwinds up against it. You have made some rate adjustments in this fund and we also have those development fees that have come in. But unlike the water fund that has posted operating revenue each of the last several years, you're seeing that this fund has had operating losses with depreciation factored in all five years and with depreciation factored out each of the last three. In addition to those losses, we've got about $120,000 of debt service that's coming out of this fund. So we've got a lot of challenges there. And to compound that, you've got the reserve capacity relationship with Met Council. That'll ultimately be capped, is at 1.2 million, but we've got a little ways to go. I think we're about halfway toward that cap right now. And until we get there, that's going to continue to add additional liabilities to this fund as well until the development can kind of catch up with that. So again, being conscious of rates as you can with this particular fund, trying to minimize that operating loss. And I think that cap from Met Council is going to serve you well in a couple of years here. But again, that would be one fund that I would continue to work with administration on. If I had to pick one fund out of the entire city that I'd want to draw your attention to, it would be this one. And again, take the advice of your team here and professional staff and consultants when it comes to how you want to approach this fund. We would hope that you'll eventually be able to grow out of the performance in this fund with development and future revenue coming in. But again, we want to make sure those are conscious decisions going forward and you don't just let things happen to you in that particular.
This is probably a dumb question. You probably already answered it.
Sure.
So the sewer fund operating revenues were up about 2.4%.
And for the water fund, operating revenues were down 2.4%. I guess I just imagine those two being tied together. If one goes up, the other one would go up.
Most of the increase this year in sewer was related to permit, hookup fees, connection fees, trunk charges. And I believe, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm seeing 283,000 of those charges in the sewer fund. I've only seen 156,000 in the water. So it seems that your sewer hookup and related charges are at a higher rate than perhaps your water is, or was there a special trunk that came in this year?
We made a rate change to, from storm sewer to sewer to help this.
Correct.
So we increased the base fee for this for 2018. We increased the base fee. We offset it with a decrease in the base fee for storm water.
Okay.
But that would have been a bump on the user side. Plus the fee structure, you don't, per unit, you don't pay the same for water as you do for sewer on your other charges. The other thing that mutes it is exactly what Matt's talking about, is unlike on the water side, we have that additional reserve capacity loan related to the Met Council interceptor line.
Sure.
So there's a significant amount of outlay. That's not in there. And also when you think of the health of the funds, this might be the revenues and expenses within a given year, but this chart doesn't show balance change within that same time period. So right now, the sewer, water fund is in a little bit healthier position. Sewer fund is not in a, is in a much less healthy position.
And I'm just, I'm just talking about the pure revenues, not the net income line. It just, it just seems so proportionally different, but...
I would say there isn't correlation typically on the user fee, but the additional development revenue really outpaced that and it's reversed that this year.
Do you have water or winter rates for sewer as well? Or do you?
Yeah.
So there's not necessarily a direct correlation between water use and sewer because we're using the sewer rates, winter rates for sewer. So, but I would agree with you analytically, that would be a reasonable assumption. That's the reason for this one. So it could be a good question, I think.
Storm sewer is the last of the three. And again, that development activity kind of makes this one spike a little bit. This fund actually is a little bit healthier again than the sewer fund. I should have mentioned the sewer fund does have a significant deficit. We're about $1.2 million in deficit in that sewer fund right now in relation to the water fund that has the positive $160,000. Storm sewer, after a couple of positive years, actually has got about $130,000 fund balance in this fund. This fund has a debt obligation as well of about $81,000, so it's been able to service that debt with the profit it's had in that fund each of the last couple of years. Not necessarily a lot of operating expenses in this particular fund. It's mostly there to take care of those capital needs that will ultimately be coming down the line, the infrastructure needs that you have. There are about 15 other funds that the city has that you don't see on an everyday basis or you don't have a lot of direct input on throughout the year. Funds to service your debt, funds to handle capital issues. And we sat down with Al and Tom and the team here and spent a couple hours going through each one to make sure that the purpose of that fund is servicing the city appropriately, that the financial health of the fund is working out just fine. And I'm confident and can tell you that the plans that you've established for each of them are working and that they're in a good place. I was asked to specifically address the 318 fund, which is a significant debt fund that you've got here. That one actually had a pretty good year. We had some land you were trying to sell to help service the debt. That sale did occur during the year. And you also have a plan regarding levies and transfers from some of your capital funds to help that. That fund actually went from a deficit financial position at the beginning of the year of $106,000 to actually a positive $177,000 at the end of the year. So a lot of good things happened in that fund. That's going to be a temporary situation because a lot of that had to do with the sale of that land, but I'm confident with the plan that you've got with the taxes and the transfers coming in at that fund, ultimately we should be okay eight or 10 years down the line after everything comes together for years. I will leave it at that. I appreciate the chance to present to you directly. I always enjoy the conversation with each here. If there's anything you wanted to know about the audit or the numbers that I didn't talk about, be happy to stay for those questions.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next item. Webster Street Wetland Restoration Grant Agreement.
So this is a project that's been out there for a while. One in its evolution to the current project, but also in part security grant funding for it. So because of its had a long duration, I ask Rich to just give a brief presentation on the genealogy of the project and then the scope of it and what we're trying to do.
So you'll recognize this location as I begin zooming in, just south and I guess south of the farm. Turn on aerial photo here.
One's lost if anyone's interested. Not that your presentation's not interesting.
No problem. So the wetland, we're talking about doing a restoration project in, for water quality improvements, is this wetland south of the farm. You may recall seeing this multiple times as we've talked about the Klein Farm issue over here where water runs down ditch and then that tile begins at this end and runs through this field and actually runs underneath this wetland and then on up towards Whispering Creek. This project will replace some existing clay tile through this wetland. And I'll show you an image here. How clay tile works in a simple fashion, it's just basically clay tubes butted up against each other. There's no coupling, there's no jointing, so these joints allow water to seep in along the way. So underground, you have a wet area, water seeps in, is carried away by the pipe is how it dries up the field. It also dries up the wetland that it's going through, which in years past has been cropped for hay and other things. That's no longer feasible, there's just too much water. So when you've heard mention with Mr. Klein about blowouts, normally these are designed to flow by gravity, so they won't be full. There'll be maybe half full of water and the water will be flowing. But if there's too much water and they start to operate where the pipe, the water level above the top of the pipe, so the pipe is flowing under pressure, instead of water flowing into those joints, it flows out. And that'll carry soil away from the pipe up to the surface. That's that blowout they're talking about. When the water levels recede, that collapses and you can end up with holes that actually clog the pipe from that collapse. So, so a pipe system like this definitely wants to be designed to not be under pressure. I would submit, in my opinion, that pipe has been operating under pressure for decades a good share of the time. What we would do with this project is replace the clay tile with a plastic pipe material that has couplings. So if you have a plain end of a pipe, the next pipe has a coupling that fits over, that has a gasket on the inside, they go over the top of each other, and water can no longer get in and out of that joint. Plus the pipe is more resilient to impact, so it doesn't crack or crush. And so by replacing that pipe through the wetland, when water can no longer get in and keep that wetland partially drained, it'll fill with water to whatever elevation is, becomes its new overflow. So we'll install a structure on the downstream end that would control that water level so that it doesn't prevent overflowing of the road. And by doing so, we create a pretty nice water quality improvement project where sediments and nutrients are taken up by the land vegetation, settled out in sediments, and helping to contribute towards cleaner water in the Vermillion River, which is this, where this eventually ends up and even, you know, on down to the Mississippi and Gulf of Mexico. So it's, cumulatively, these add up, you know, each length of project doesn't do much as a percentage, but the goal is to keep making these improvements throughout the country. So this project's part of that. Hale, you can talk more about the grant and the funding. The science of it is that simple. I don't know if there's other questions. We are getting funded for what, 80% or 90% of the cost?
90%.
So the city's share, I think, is something like seven grand. And most of the cost be picked up. You know, there's some other benefits besides water quality. I think you'll have a habitat and open space improvement, so aesthetically, environmentally. It will eliminate some call-outs for Cory on addressing blowouts or concerns about collapse because of the new pipes, so some of those maintenance concerns will go away as well.
Is there any potential benefit to the Klein Farm?
No.
You ready for that question?
I could make an argument, but I don't think it will be noticeable to him.
Does this grant come from Vermillion Watershed?
I think it's state, it's more statewide, but it's targeted, they've got funds targeted to different watersheds. And so we were sought out by Vermillion River and Scott WMO for this. We had been looking at different options to do something with this. I, I don't know if any of you recall, we had looked a while back at whether we could restore this partially degraded wetland and create a wetland bank that we could use whenever we have a project that has wetland impacts. That didn't work out because it's too small of an area to get the credits we would need. So we've been looking at various ways to try and make an improvement here and so this came along and it seems to fit, so.
Is there any action that's needed?
Council would need to approve the Webster Street Wetland Restoration Grant Agreement.
Anyone interested in making a motion for that? Motion makes in line? Second by Seaverson. Any discussion before we take a vote? Is there any kind of our engineering group or any comments or thoughts?
I think it's a further thing to project, so definitely not much to it. It'd be great if it would give a benefit to the fund, but there's not much, I think it's been a benefit by the funds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, unintentional use policy.
So this is an item that was on the previous council meeting. The council had asked to have it continued to this meeting because we were down a couple of council people. And it was clear during the discussion that there was a range of starting opinions on it. And the council felt that it would be a good discussion to have with a full council in place. Just a little bit of quick background for John and Don. A few years back, the city council had established a policy related to unintentional use. Prior to that, if let's say you went on vacation, the neighbor kid came over and turned on your spigot, or you had a pipe burst in the house and you had some sort of unusually high usage that wasn't through, that wasn't intentional, not of any fault of your own, you could come to the city, but you'd have to go through an appeal process. And the appeals board would review it and depending on circumstances, provide some relief. Never on the amount of the usage, but it might relate to what structure, what tier, part of the tier structure it was billed at, and address any late fees or et cetera that might be associated with it. The council a few years back decided, you know what, this is becoming, this is a not uncommon occurrence. If we establish some set criteria for it, we can just delegate it to administration to basically just process it. And so the council basically said, if you haven't had a request in so many years, if you had, bill was current over the last year, you will receive a limit in the billing for that usage of tier two. So even if you used, let's say, a million gallons, you would have any of that billed at tier three. It'll be capped at tier two, which would be 20, the 20,000 gallon level. We have had quite a bit of usage of it since it was put in place. There have been 27 requests. Twenty of those were met the eligibility requirements. And in those cases, in the staff report, we've identified for council what the average savings was and what the common range of those requests has been over time. About a month ago, Mr. Bosch had come to the city council and he'd indicated that, hey, given our rate structure, even with the unintentional use policy, if you have a lot of usage, this is still quite a bit of money. And so the council directed staff to bring the item back for discussion. Any very broad... In a very broad sense, there's really three things you can do. You can do nothing, say, no, the structure we have in place or the parameters we have in place are acceptable. The other option is to possibly say, okay, we're going to drop the maximum tier rate for billing in these circumstances down to the first tier. Or it could be to actually waive usage. And just say, hey, we're going to cap your bill at some amount hypothet, you know, as an example, based on what your typical usage would have been in previous years or in previous months. Those are kind of the edges of the box and there's all kinds of options in between. Staff doesn't have a specific recommendation related to this, this is really purely a policy decision as to what's appropriate. And so we're simply looking for direction from the council, whether or not they want to make any changes and what those would be. After we have that direction, if changes are directed, we would prepare an action item for a future council meeting.
Counsel, any thoughts?
I'd be open to, I mean, kind of a modification of the second bullet, reducing the charges to whatever the, typical. So I mean, I wouldn't want to reduce somebody's unintentional one if they're always a tier two down to tier one. But if, you know, if we were to look back historically over the last twelve months, they averaged tier one, drop it down to whatever they've averaged, something like that.
There's a nuance to that because there's a lot of seasonal adjustment. So if you're coming into spring hypothetically, some of these spring usage, so what we'll do is there's usually.
Look at the month of the previous year.
Correct, yeah.
That's what I would.
Sounds reasonable.
And then, I guess, the second point I was going to say too is, it'd be, once it passes, it's moving forward, we're not going reverse on anything, because then where do we stop that, that point? So I wouldn't go back and make any changes retroactively.
So no retroactive changes, okay?
Just work on their request.
Would we, hypothetically, would we want to do anything for Mr. Bosch, whose request to take a look at this initiated it?
I don't know, I guess that's where I struggle with, if we do that with him, then. And I know there isn't any potential, other outstanding requests that we're considering at this time, so we could say then that is what it's capped at, but.
I think you could, there wasn't, there hasn't been any similar request within recent proximity to Mr. Bosch's. And it was his request to look at the policy that prompted it, so I think you could provide a clear distinct point in defend that.
Staff had, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, the staff did indicate to Mr. Bosch that we would consider going retroactive to.
Mr. Bosch had requested that we do so and we'd indicated that we would forward that request to council. I think the council can do so without and defend that decision, although if you were to go back, because there's a clear point there, going back any further than that, all of a sudden you get on a slippery slope really fast.
Okay, I, I thought I understood it.
Personally, I think it would be fair to do so.
And if we were to get one tomorrow, we would apply it to that one as well, so anything from the point that that request was made, to when we pass this and then moving forward.
Correct, yeah.
That's very reasonable.
Yeah.
Sounds reasonable to me, John, Don?
Yeah.
So what, so what I'm hearing, just to make sure that I, I have it all, is the council would be directing us to amend the policy to when they have an unintentional use, to basically amend it to waive off the use, any usage above and beyond what their typical usage would have been historically. We'll have to work on that.
When you say waive.
I guess, and I'll rephrase what I was thinking, we would drop it, they would pay for the total usage, but drop it to the tier that was of the previous years. So if I'm typically always in tier one of May and June and I had an unintentional use in May and June of this year of twenty thousand gallons, I'd pay for those twenty thousand gallons at tier one, not tier two, or tier three or whatever.
Yeah, how I understood.
Yeah, that's what I understood too.
That's nice, that's giving Tom a pause.
No, I'm thinking that might be, one, it's a little bit more complicated and during watering, if you're talking warm weathers, that can jump around wildly during irrigation season, during the winter time, people's usage from year to year is fairly consistent. But during the watering season, you can have people jump from tier one to tier three, month to month, year to year, fairly regularly, just depending on weather conditions, et cetera.
So it's, it sounds like we have some level of consensus of modifying to the typical tier. Where we're at right now is figuring out what the best way to do that is.
I think it's a methodology.
So is that, is that something that staff would like to kick around differently?
Can't you just do it on an annual, a tiered annual basis? An average annual?
Last five years.
No, because again, can move around quite a bit, depending on the, depending on the year. Part of the rationale for the, for the tier two was that during irrigation season? That's going to accommodate most irrigation, most users, people that are watering over twenty thousand are watering a lot.
But that's not, but that's, that's not an unintentional use.
No, but, but it was, that was the reason for the cap is that the council at the time felt that twenty thousand was kind of a reasonable upper limit of where, of that tiering. That people can have usage, tip, most usage is typically below twenty thousand.
Couldn't we just make it tier one and be done with it?
That would be simplistic and it would be easy to administer and easy to understand for the end user, our customer, when you're saying, okay, it's a waive, it's not like, okay, it was based on this usage. The more complicated it becomes and the harder it is for us to explain, the less satisfied the customer is when they're trying to understand how it's being adjusted.
If staff proves that it's unintentional and just leave it at tier one and be done.
I mean, the only time we're going to run into that is when that twenty-one thousand or twenty thousand person has an unintentional use of fifty thousand. Now we're going to drop them, now we're going to give them a little extra coupon.
Yes, correct, that, that would be the, that would be the one thing.
But they're still paying for it, they're still paying a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like.
Well, and if you think of it that way, yeah, they're getting a savings there, but they had an unintentional use that was large enough for them to come in, so they're still paying some additional amount, so.
I'd be supportive of that.
If you just drop it down to tier one.
Down to tier one for the two months.
So any, any unintentional uses being dropped down to tier one, is that what we're?
If they qualify under, if they qualify under the policy.
And there's only, they can only do this X amount, it's like, once every.
Correct, once every three years. And to be honest, we don't go out, request video or pictures, if somebody has the unintentional use, generally we'll see it, obviously in their bill, and we trust the circumstances, most people, in our experience, people don't come in and make up stories about this. Well, maybe once or twice, it's happened where we suspected it happened, but usually it's, it's things that are fairly common. I had some sort of malfunction with a fixture of some sort in my house, I had a leak. And one we've had a few, a few times is the neighbor kid came over and turned down the water spigot while we were on vacation. We came home to a flooded backyard and a monstrous water bill.
When you go on vacation, you turn your spigots off.
Yep.
Should be doing that, but.
And, and we do have, you know, we've had occasionally some unintentional uses that have been fairly substantial. So to give you an example, we have an individual who right now, who's coming in. Because of their payment history, they don't qualify for the intentional use policy, but they're coming to the appeals board. And they had, and I'm not kidding you, a million gallons of usage. They had a, they had a significant water break in their house, they were gone, absent from the house for an extended period of months, weeks of time.
Is this going to make a cancel or will we schedule another?
Yeah, we found it, Steph found it because she saw the huge usage, she sent public works out. They peeked inside, saw the leak, shut it off at the curb and we contacted the property owner, because it was a vacant property. And.
So they weren't even aware, or they wouldn't even, would have been worse.
And so just the current policy saved them about ten thousand dollars, the usage, and this additional would save them several additional thousand dollars, their bill will still be fairly substantial, just because of the volume usage. That, we're not triggered to that, so.
That's a good question though.
But that's, that's probably the worst case we've ever had, usually most usages are, we went on vacation and the toilet bleeder was stuck open while we were gone or something like that. This, the one I was talking about, that's the most usage we've ever seen.
You were talking about softball last night, they left the hose on over the weekend.
So.
He'll be coming in to talk about it.
So we've, so we're in agreement of modifying to tier one for the unintentional use and we would be willing to go back to what point?
Whatever from the council is applied to Mr. Bosch's situation and he would be the starting point going forward.
So the date of Bosch is the date.
The date of his request, yeah.
Got it.
Or when he came to council, so.
Okay.
If the council's okay with that.
The day of Bosch. Okay, so this was a direction thing, correct?
Correct.
So staff feels they have the direction?
Yep, so we'll be back either on the eleventh or the twenty-fifth of July with it, it'll be a consent agenda item, it's a fairly simple tweak to the policy, so.
Any further comments before we move on? Nice job, guys and gals. I would say guys, I don't mean just guys.
I say that too.
I say it all the time.
Don't worry about it.
You mean in a non-gender basis.
I do mean in the gender. Uh, okay, moving on. Authorized payment to New Market Bank for easement related to Casa Two-Ninety-One Roundabout Project, I will be staying out of this one.
Fairly straightforward, this is to secure the easements from New Market Bank for the trail portion of the roundabout project that crosses their property along County Road Two.
Motion to move easements related to, is that right? Payment to New Market Bank for easements?
Yep.
Is that, okay.
Motion by Timmerman?
Second.
Second by Schwitberg. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I abstain. Motion passes. All right, under reports.
I have nothing for administration unless there are any questions from council on any city-related items or any of the updates I've provided over the last couple of weeks.
Public Works, Cory, am I okay?
They're, they're getting by, but as my last update indicated, after tomorrow, they don't have Justin. We're still in the process of filling Peyton's position. So we currently have two candidates in the hopper out of the last applicant pool to fill both of those positions, but reasonably it'll be two to three, it'll probably be like three weeks, maybe longer, depending on circumstance, before they're on board and then a ramp up in training time.
And there's no creative way to do like a contracted thing with?
By the time we got it up and going, the period would be done. What it really comes down to is they're going to mow and they're going to do reactive maintenance items and all of the other typical summer preventive maintenance stuff is just going to get pushed to late into the summer and into the fall. So they're just basically going to keep the wheels on the truck mode for the next three to four weeks. And then once they start getting people on board, then they'll ramp back up to where they were. So things like street patching and stuff that we'd normally do, those types of maintenance projects that require a larger crew and more bodies, that stuff's just going to get pushed to later in the season than it typically would.
I was just going to say, I'm going to feel really bad when I ask our, our street light, talk about our street light, it's been on for a week probably.
Oh, it's just running sets?
Yeah.
Well, that's not public, that's not us, if, if there's a, there's a number on the poll, call step with the number, we'll report it to you like you're helping a business.
Okay.
So easy, easy.
Good, then I don't feel bad, I was going to say, oh my gosh.
There's no other towns around here that owe us? The folks up here to help us out?
Quite honestly, over the years, we've been usually the one who's asked and that helped out by our bigger brother and sisters.
We've been received.
No, they're, Cory's not, Cory's been running short to one degree or another for the last several years with only three periods of full staffing. So this is not an uncommon occurrence, he just asked the council to be reasonably understanding in regards to the limits of the department.
So is there going to be another position opening up then, or because that, then there's three, right?
So, based on the council discussion at the last meeting and the direction from council, we eliminated the seasonal position and made a second full-time position and we're hiring, we had two candidates, actually we had three solid candidates, but we have two candidates we're looking at our applicant pool instead of just one. And so we have two finalists that are currently being backgrounded by Craig Anderson. That'll probably take maybe another week to be completed and then we have to do the other normal, normal stuff.
From a future planning standpoint, would, would it make sense, would it be something to look at to have some sort of backup plan of some contract, of a contract situation for if next year we're in a similar situation and we don't have to wait?
I've, I've had those discussions with Cory and it's not really feasible because it really depends on the circumstances, the time of the month. No, so for example, if we had a water main break and if it was something that we might normally do, since we have Jason on board and he has some of that expertise, if we were fully staffed, that might be something where we might go, hey, you know, in the right time of year, we might go and do it. For something like that, we just call contractor. So some of the things that we might project or work that we might consider doing when we're fully staffed, that stuff, if it has to get done and can't be deferred, we're just going to hire somebody to do it.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for Public Works? Please, Department. Your show, Brady.
Tell a joke while I get this up. Two guys walk into a bar. Horse walks into a bar.
Why the long face? I told that to my eleven-year-old and she just died, thought it was the funniest thing I'd ever said in my life. And I didn't, she, I didn't correct her that it was an old joke.
Chief Joel, did you know that you cannot hear a pterodactyl go to the bathroom?
Yeah, they're extinct.
Oh. Like on Tarmigan. Yes. Our dispatchers can never spell Tarmigan, so they're always like, when you call up traffic on, you know, it's always Tarmigan, they're like, what street? And then when you say it starts with P, then they're like, oh, okay. Everything auto-populates and they're hitting the T and.
When I moved to town, I literally was passed on a house on a block because I just couldn't pronounce that. Forget it, I'm moving on to another.
Did you hear about that call when Lena went down, only hit the call nine-one-one? Well, we'll send an ambulance right away, where do you look, Hyacinth Street, can you spell that? Just come to wall, I'll drag her over a block.
Just some great staff answers.
That's hard to follow too, so. So this is going to be a staffing study and these are really good to do, this is going to be my first one here. And the importance of a staffing study is to, as staff walks in.
Geez, we planned that.
Wow.
He texted you to go there.
Big time, I did not text that, it's a hundred percent coincidental. So it's very important to do these staffing studies for numerous reasons. Guidance for short and long-term budgeting needs, what, what do we need to do and how do we need to plan for our budget in the future? And then also educate you guys on the demands of the police department, what we're seeing out there on the street. As you know, happens in the middle of night, you're all asleep, but we're in twenty-four hour operation, just kind of give you a look into that. And then determine if there's adequate staff, if you feel that we have what we need to provide the high quality of desired community policing. So methodology, methodology of the study today is we're going to look at it kind of from two points, a statistical, the numbers we collect and put into our computer on things that we're doing, and then the coverage data. When do we have police officers in the city? How much of the day, of the twenty-four hours in the day, do we have police coverage? And when they're not working, who's providing that coverage for our community? So dates of the normal staffing study, I thought this was important too, a little bit, is we typically go January one to December thirty-first and then you're giving it some time in December, or if you're in January, February, where those numbers are relevant. In order to adjust that, since I came on in March and we're doing this now in June, is I went to June tenth of last year, twenty eighteen, to June tenth of this year, so these are real accurate, up-to-date numbers just as of a couple of weeks ago. So the total, going down the statistical path, the total ICRs, and these are incident numbers that we've generated, are forty-six hundred and eighteen, that's every single thing that we do, every traffic stop, every call-out, every suspicious call, every time the police are called. This, these are also things like record checks, permits that we enter into our computers, everything. So of that, the part one crimes, which are your felonies, serious crimes, in those times, we've had nineteen. Your Part 2 crimes, your gross misdemeanors and misdemeanors, 73. Where this is gonna come into play, and as we go further, just one second, into the statistical analysis, we use these numbers and plug them into a formula, and that formula helps give staffing guidance. Go ahead, Joe.
Just remind me, I think you said, what time period were you working on?
June of 18 to June of this year. Yep. And that doesn't correlate with uniform crime reporting to the FBI, but numbers are numbers, the computer, you know, I just wanted to, this is this month that we brought the numbers up to. So, um, officer-initiated activity. So when somebody calls in and says, hey, I'm gonna be on vacation, uh, for the next two weeks, we check my house, here's my address, here's, the cars are gonna be there. Whenever we go to check that house, we start a incident number out. It's a service that we provide. So if we go 10 times to that house over the two weeks that they're there, which we do, that's an officer-initiated, that's, I'm doing that, that's not a call. So of that number there, you can see a third of it all is just things our proactive policing, our, our officers are doing. The 9,000 codes, I don't know the history why it's called 9,000 codes, but those are all the other calls for service. Suspicious people, car breakdown, motor assist, unlock a door, unlock a house, um, I fall and I can't get up. All of those type of calls fall under the 9,000 codes. Scott County, um, has, in that timeframe, taken, when we're not on duty, 76 calls. And this is, and I put this assists excluded in here because when they're, they come to help us quite a bit, and we go just outside the city a lot to help them, I didn't put that in there because these are calls when we're not providing service to the community, and we're not here because we're not 24-hour. So, the International Chiefs of Police Association, for a number of years, has come up with a formula. This formula's on a spreadsheet, and I can't even, it's over several slides here because it's so big. But what you do is that statistical analysis that I gave you before, those numbers, you plug them into this formula, and the formula puts a weight. You can see the Part 1 crimes here is what I gave you earlier at 20. The weight of the Part 1 crimes is heavier because felonies take a long time to process, to write the reports, to take the person all the way to jail, to enter all the photographs into our data management system, to investigate, to, and it just takes a lot of staff time, a lot of times several officers. So they have a heavier weight. The Part 2 crimes, they give a relative weighting of three. So what they're saying is the four is, it takes four times as long to process that crime as it might a misdemeanor or less serious offense. So the traffic accidents, a lot of reporting, officer-initiated stuff, that's just the time it takes that's to put one across. So like all spreadsheets that have formulas, these numbers, as you enter them in, populate all over the different parts. The arrests, how many arrests and people in custody, and that timeframe taking 26 people for different level of offenses. They have a, sorry, I wish I could make it brighter, but, um, and the colors are in the formula, I can't change it. So when you put the weight on those numbers that I gave you, the total weighted events after you apply all the numbers to them is 7,300. Now, a patrol beat is an officer working eight hours, 24 hours in the day, so a constant, that's one officer working that time. A shift, eight-hour shift, um, eight hours, 365 days a year. So, excuse me, one officer patrol shift per day. So that's just if an officer worked one, one eight-hour shift in a day. And that's called an FTE. And the eight-hour beat, and it plugs all the numbers in here, and multiplies it by the time, um, we spend in court, by the time days off that we have, uh, training is a huge number, and it whittles this number down to 4.16 beat shifts required for our workload. And one beat shift equals eight hours, 365 days a year. So, uh, in calculating the number of patrol officers that you need then, um, you take the vacation time that you get a year, the holidays, the training, the sick time, and the court time that you're not available, and it comes down to that many hours, 1,113 hours out of the, um, 2080, or 2,900 hours that you would be available for that beat hour in a year. I'm gonna kill you with numbers here, I apologize, worse than engineering sometimes. So, when you're unavailable there, that's the number, and then it leaves, this number at the bottom here is 1,800 hours available for an officer in a year. So then, in this big spreadsheet, as you move down, the days off, it continues, that's the unavailable for patrol that we talked about up above, this is the available, then this is the patrol officers required to staff one beat. So how many officers do I need to staff the one beat for eight hours, 365 days a year? And it's 1.62. So the 1.62 times the number from above, the 4.16 due to this activity, so the activity we have, and then the officers it takes, comes up to this number right here. And I'm sorry, it's hard to see, it's 6.72. So break it down, the International Chiefs of Police, this can be applied all over the nation, it's used for staffing studies across LA, New York, this is the same study they use. It is saying that for our activity, we would be at 6.72 officers is recommended. We are at 5.48 officers, current staff, including Steve, who's not fully operational yet, but he's in training, which is a minus 1.24. He, he matters. He's just training, he's the new guy. He's doing great, by the way. So, uh, this analysis on the statistics is saying for the activity we have, for the officers we have, we are down 1.24 officers. So, wiring up here, freaking out, saying we're down staff, we're, this is a guide, it's a suggestion. It does change, even though it's applied all across the country, it changes to the community. And we are blessed with the council and councils in the past who have set community-valued-based policing, which allows us to do and have this incredibly high officer-initiated activity. And that's due to you and the councils before that have made that important. So, why this number doesn't bother me is because it's, it's a guide, and councils in the past, historically, from what I've been told, they start to worry if that's two officers down, and before Steve, we were at 4.48, which, as you can see, is over two officers down. So we've made that adjustment. It took a long time to do that because of hiring and not stuff that we could control. But what I'm saying is, we're in the parameters, and I feel very comfortable right now at providing that high level of service.
So as you can see, it's a model, it's an extremely useful tool, but like all models, there's assumptions with regards to time requirements, a lot of, and generalizations that go into it, and that's where Steve's talking about it. Steve had talked in the past, and Brady's talking now, that there's a judgment you have to make, you still have to do a gut check against the reality of it. So when we're down two officers, it's saying, okay, you really should be looking at whether or not you need an officer. The other thing it doesn't take into account is it's taking the total activity and it's doing simple division. Well, the reality is, the activity within the department isn't at an even measured pace over the course of a day, a month, a week, or a year. So you have peak times that you have calls more on Thursday nights at 10 o'clock or whatever it is. So again, it's just a guide. The other thing is that when we've been staffing in the past, this is a useful tool with relative to workload, we've really been staffing for coverage, and Brady's gonna get into that in just a, a minute, where he'll talk about the coverage demands and coverage requirements and the benefits of coverage. So again, this is just a, it's a tool, but it's not, it's not an absolute with regards to what staffing needs to be, self-doubt against, you know, how much are our officers able to get everything that they need to be done within a shift or in a sentence.
So two questions. How do, how does our number compare that officer-initiated, that percentage of total hours with other communities?
I don't, I can't give you a hard number. Uh, I've worked for four police departments in my career, Minnetonka, Chaska, Ramsey County Sheriff's Department, I did an internship with North Mankato Police Department, and then now. They're still in here. Um, I don't want, I don't want their heads to get big. We do more officer-initiated non-traffic than any department I've, I've witnessed. When I was starting here and Craig was training me in, and I was looking over the ICRs every day, and I saw extra patrol, dedicated patrol, house checks, and suspicion calls as numbers this high, I mean, you're talking a third, I could go back one more, a third of it is our officers not sitting in a department, eating, chatting, watching videos, they're out and about in the community, and only one officer working at a time. A lot of officer-initiated stuff is done with two people. We go look at warrants, or we're gonna go bar checks or what have you, this is done with one officer working most of the time, or quite a bit of the time. So it's very high.
Does that include the stopping up at the school to do the community events, the going up to the library? So those are included in there, too?
It's important to document.
Because I want those built in.
Yes, yep. That's, it's very important. Steve recognized that, and that's a community value policing system. Now, the fear is, if this gets to 2, 3, 4, this number that we're down, we simply do not have time to do this. And so this model, and then going into coverage that I'm coming up, is to keep that balance. And I said this in my interviews, um, I don't believe I said it in my interview here, I have a responsibility to run a department lean to cover the community values-based policing, but not too fat, so if the economy turns down, I'm laying off staff, which then further ruins the morale and the, and the, the community values-based policing. So it's that balancing model here, and to me, and when I showed this to Tom and we talked about it, it's, it's in that range, that guide, it's a guide. And I feel, um, statistically in the numbers, we're where we need to be.
And I guess I'll speak for myself, that, you know, if we start to, based on workload and different things or whatever, to have to cut back on that, those officer-initiated stuff, that's where, come back to us, because I think, and again, I'll speak for myself, I, I would want to make sure that we get the resources available to continue that kind of work because it just benefits our community greatly and the work that you guys do and...
Thank you, Speaker.
Well, thank you, and, you know, my history is obviously short, and I, I'm trying to paint where we're going and where we're gonna continue to go. Like I said, I inherited a ship that's running in the right direction, I wanna keep it going there, but you can ruin that with having too many police officers. And because your budget now is too great, you can't get equipment, you can't, you know, you just, you're, you're, you're too heavy, and you're then too proactive enforcement-wise, we need to keep that balance. And I, that's my philosophy as a citizen and as a community member, as a taxpayer, I wanna, and Tom's vision is the exact same, I wanna keep us right within that margin where we can provide excellent community value-based policing without having too many staff where our budget gets out of control and, and we can't handle it as a community and/or falling the other way, getting too few where we can't do that officer-initiated stuff. Officer burnout is a real thing, and if you're going call to call to call, and all you're doing is typing reports, that's where you start getting stressed, you start, um, not sleeping well, your health goes, and it is invigorating and healthy to an officer. Steve, you probably saw pictures, was out shooting hoops, you know, being able to stop and do that kind of refreshes our inner, our goodness that we wanna police with, and that balance is where I wanna keep us.
So this is a segue into what we're really staffing for, which is coverage, because if we're looking at where we're putting our bang for the buck for community service for delivering that service, it's expanding when we have officers available. It's right now, on mow shifts, we're not stretched to the circumstances that Brady was just describing. What we're really looking to do is have an officer tell us that we have response times, and then we need, and then we have overlap at the appropriate time point, maybe we have two officers where we need it either for, um, other operational reasons or for just default volume that we typically see during those nights.
And so the other thing is coverage analysis. And so statistics get plugged into a formula that give you that. Coverage analysis is how much of a 24-hour day, 365 days a week, we have an Elko New Market Police Department officer responding to your calls. So with our recent hire, Steve, back there, which is perfect timing again, um, we have the, we have five full-time police officers. We have, we have two part-time police officers, and then we have one part-time record staff. So where we're at is seven police officers working for the community, five at full-time, two at part-time. What coverage do we have? Well, when Steve gets off of his training, and that's an assumption, but we feel safe that he's gonna get there, um, we are gonna go to a new schedule that will, without going to that, because we can talk about that at another meeting, will give us statistically a scheduled officer 365 days a year, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Meaning, we have the staff to do that on face value. But if you go back to that analysis, what is there? Average of 20 days of vacation a year or time off due to sick, uh, paternity, maternity, what have you. We have court, we have training, which as you know, in our society, the demands of the training has gone through the roof, that take officers off of the staff. So, we do not have enough staff to have 24-hour police coverage when you factor in that stuff. What is that? Using, uh, analysis I just looked at in 2018, from January to December in 2018, time off, the average is, um, 20 days of PTO, meaning vacation, sick, uh, family needs, what have you. When you average training, court days on top of that, holidays, 16, um, it's, we estimate at different times because we have overlap, and we have, we do the best we can when an officer takes on vacation, do a shift, and adjust everybody around, but we estimate about 10% of the year, so 36 days about where we have a hole, not 36 days total with no one here, where we have holes for four, five hours, six hours at night, maybe in the morning on the weekend. We do our best, but we estimate that 10% of the days, we have holes in our schedule. And we do the best we can, but there's still holes. What does that mean? The wonderful Scott County Sheriff's Department, and that relationship has, since I've been here, uh, is huge to us, and I've learned the value of that, more so than where I came from. They help us a ton. It's reciprocated, we help them a ton, um, and, uh, like we just did earlier today on a call, they're just so far away and we're so close, so we helped them out until they could get there. They do not provide during that 10.4% of the time where we have holes in our coverage, they can't. They don't provide proactive policing. They don't come to our community during that time, and, you know, they have a whole county, and, you know, there's times where there's only two, three deputies covering the whole county. Um, I don't wanna get into specific times, but their demands on their county resources are, it's tough. And, um, so, with that being said, due to no fault of their own, I mean, it's just their staffing, their geographic area that they're respond, uh, responding from, this is what we see. And these are incredible numbers, 'cause I, like I said, I've been at four other departments, these are great numbers. In-progress calls are these Part 1 calls for service, these ones where something big's going on, there's an active in-progress crime or report of a crime. These ones where something big's going on, there's an active in-progress crime or report of a crime that we're racing to. Elko New Market, when we are responding and we have staff in town, we're at 2.4 minutes. From the time we're dispatched, now that can be different from when you're calling and you're screaming and trying to get fax and they're trying to enter it in their computer. From the time they get that to us, we get that call, either we're in our car or we race to our call and get to your house is 2.14 minutes. Now, Scott County Sheriff's Department is 13.3. And Minneapolis, St. Paul, um, a lot of larger communities, they wish for this response time. So the Sheriff's Department is doing an incredible job of getting here that quick when they're coming from Shakopee, when they're coming from Jordan, when they're coming from Savage or Prior Lake, where they might be helping out. So this isn't meant to slam them at all, but it is meant to illustrate how important it is to a caller to have us in the city working. So not in-progress calls, these are calls where they're requesting our service. Can you come take a report? Can you come talk to me about this? Can you come speak with my child? Can you, you know, these are calls where we're needed. So there's not emergent, are you gonna drive a routine to? You can see here, 8.2 minutes. We might be at the school and there's a call way down in the Elko side, you know, um, in Glenboro, you know. It just takes several, you know, time to stop what we're doing and get here. You can see the Sheriff's Department when we're not, when we're not here answering those non-emergent calls. Believe it or not, uh, and we're the same way, we can't go code to alarm calls. So say the county, you get your glass breakage alarm calls, that's a non-emergent call. You, you're not allowed by policy procedure, cause there's so many false ones to drive emergent to it because you're not gonna risk your life or somebody else's life, right? That's the same thing. These are non-emergency calls. So you can see, you know, this is, we're four times, five times quicker. Here we're three times quicker. Again, no slam on them. They have their own workload and they have the entire county to cover. We have City of Elko New Market. Total incidents by hour, I put this in here because you can see the activity goes down between that two, three o'clock. Now, these again are the total incidents, that 4,600 number that I showed you, um, just broken down over the last year. These are when the activity's happening. Now, it's also our activity. It's also traffic stops, calls for service, bar clothes, um, you know, DWIs, everything is in here. So what you can see is this lull here and that is, because you can see even at two o'clock, we have a lot of incidents that are happening at, um, we start ramping up at six. This is the hole in the schedule and in our coverage that Steve is gonna fill. So when you approve that and authorize that, this is the timeframe, now we're gonna have another person. We only have one officer to cover our night shifts. And those days, and I'll say it, cause are rotating, you never know when there's gonna be a police officer working. But we only had one officer to cover all those nights and now we have two. And so now with that double coverage, that's why Steve scheduling might as well have 24-hour coverage. What sick calls, PTO, stuff like that, and that's when you'll start getting and seeing that, those issues. So conclusion after all that, I think, I really do think we're fine. I think we're sitting in a great spot. I think once we venture, we're crossing over in the new frontier as Steve's a growth position and we're growing. So we're crossing into that new frontier. And what I would ask you is let's look at it again in a year, but I think with a new schedule, combined with the additional staff, we're gonna really see that hole back here fill in. And I think we're gonna add more proactive policing because now we have more time when we have an officer in the city. So right now, my recommendation is we don't need any additional staff. We're sitting good and I'm asking that next year around this time or whenever it benefits for budgeting, we'll take another look, do the same assessment and see where we're at. So that's in conclusion, I feel we, uh, we're sitting where we need to be.
John, you go first.
So have you looked at what it would take to make it 100%?
It, it's actually a tough call. So could we make it 24/7 right now with the staff we have? Yes, but no overlap. Right now, we staff for officer safety reasons where we overlap our officers during those hot times and where you need to calls. And that back, that backup doesn't change if we're screaming, that response time from the Sheriff's Department, if we're screaming for help, that's 13 minutes that you saw there. So if we could do it now, but not safely and not with that community value based policing, we would just have a body here, um, and no overlap. So with the overlap and keeping officer safety and keeping that 24-hour coverage and sometimes overlap during those important times, my estimate is two more officers. And with that being said, um, I anticipate looking at our development with Renee and projects that are coming online, apartment buildings and housing subdivisions and population. I would think, and this is just a guess, cause you never know, that in 2021, we'd probably be ready to add another one to kind of keep those numbers, that staffing study. I think that's gonna grow another officer. So it's gonna say 2.4 down. And I think then adjust, see how we do. And then again, cautious growth. But I do think if we added, uh, after Steve, another two more, so we had seven full-time and two part-time, I think we could get to where we would be able to provide 24/7 coverage.
That's pretty typical, John. If we're looking to provide the coverage, it's usually about seven officers plus some part-time continuing to help with jobs.
And vacations.
I have a question, I must ask someone else.
Hi, Dr. Swallow.
Obviously this predates you, but it feels like every time we have, um, authorized the hire of a police officer, the length of time from the time that we as a council say, let's do it, to the time that officer is actually even in training, it's an absurd amount of time. And so I guess my question's a multiple part question. If John, you've been picking on, or Steve, if you've been picking on him, so I'm gonna continue that. If he just says, this sucks, I don't want anything to do with this. In your expectations, what is that, what is a reasonable timeline to be in place?
So,
The second part before you answer that is how do we, how does that compare to other police departments?
So first, when I started 20 years ago, cops was the biggest thing. And every position I applied for had 500 to 800 people applying for one position. Lunchrooms, classrooms, whole auditoriums filled with people testing for one position. So that's changed. Now, Tom would have to give you the number that applied, but where we just hired at Chaska, we got maybe 60, 70 applications for one position. So it's taking longer and it's harder to find qualified people to do the job. So that's why it takes so long. This time, we went through three processes to find this brilliant man back here. And that was before I was here. So that's the, it takes a long time, cause there's less people that wanna go on this job. Societal pressures, um, the, the villainization of police officers in the community, the legal issues, the lawsuits, everything. Blame it on what you want, there's just less people that wanna give themselves to communities to protect them. Things you can do to minimize that, that we can't do at our size. Where I came from, um, they hired community service officers, people that wanna be police officers. They background and put them on as community service, get to view them, watch them, see how they work. Position open, filled immediately. We don't have those resources. Those positions, um, are typically in the bigger cities with bigger budgets where they have more code enforcement. So they kind of have people on standby. When I also started, they had lists. They had companies making money called pool that would police officer something list that you would take a test, get on the list and police departments go, yeah, I want 10 candidates. They were there the next week and every one of those candidates was backgrounded and ready to go. And you would pay, a police department paid $250 per name on that list to interview. So there was just such a demand. We don't have that. So, um, cadet programs, volunteer programs, um, maintaining lists. Like if you can, if you proactively, I know in a year, you say, I want somebody to start in January or June of next year, I would start pretty soon now and get lists going and maintain three or four like viable, good candidates. And then call them, hey, have you found a job yet?
That's assuming that you have three or four viable candidates.
Yes, yeah. Or I mean, people to get, even get in the background. So you're, you're taking away that interview time because you've already interviewed them ahead of time at a pace where you know, these are three great people we wanna send to background. But the problem with our last one, one got scooped up, another office, another one didn't pass our occupational testing and then, you know, Steve, so.
If, if we decided now that, you know, we wanna hire a police officer or second officer next year, is that really a decision that has to be, is it a 12-month process, a 3-month process? And then what should we prepare for as candidates?
I, you don't know. I mean, if candidates and the, there's every month.
How many people take the test, Steve, a month? 150, 200 or 12 state-wise?
Yeah, so every, every month, the license test is given to be a licensed police officer. So you've met all the qualifications, now you take your license test. Every month, 300 people across the state about, I think is the last number I heard, now become more eligible. So you're always getting different pools of people. Now, there's different things we can do, explorer posts where you get juveniles that are interested in it. They cost money and time and effort, but there's different feeder programs you can do. But there's also mentoring, like I mentor a lot of students and, um, I like to go to colleges and teach classes and get out there. I have a lot of people ride along with me. I keep all those people's information, especially the ones I like. And then I have my, hey, did you ever get a job yet? So there's different networking things you can do.
So it's an impossible question really for me.
It really is.
And that's, and that's fair, I, I can appreciate that.
We don't have the resources of a big department to make it where it's like this. As a matter of fact, my replacement just got sworn in. So I've been here three months and he was already a CSO that was taking a test coming up. So it, it happens to everybody at times, um, but the bigger agencies have these feeder programs that they can just sample on.
And again, I only bring it up just, it feels like every time we've looked to hire a police officer, it's taken much, much longer than we had planned on. So if you have ideas and insight as we kind of progress throughout the years, I'm sure Tom has thoughts.
I do. So, well, imagine that. But there's things that we could do. So normally hiring process for an officer is about three months if everything was, three to four months if everything was ideal. About the same amount of time it took Chaska to replace Brady's, uh, vacancy on the, on the department.
The problem is just again, they were cool. We, we've experienced not only police officers, but we, it took us, um, nine months to hire a funny position. I mean, we went out three times for that. Public works, we've had better luck at, we've only gone out a couple of times, you know. So it's, it's across the board. And when I talk to my peers in other cities, they're seeing the same situation. We've had a lot of discussions in recent years, cause you know, we, it seems like all the time that we fill a position, we're already butted up against when we're gonna be hired in the next position. So we've been kind of in the higher, I mean, I've sat in more interviews with you, Josh, in the last, yeah. We, we've interviewed a lot of people.
Yeah. And I'm sorry for that, but.
But we've had a lot of discussions about how do we improve it. Part of the things that we see is, um, our numbers are actually pretty good. I mean, we've been averaging in the low 50s for every application, every applicant pool we've been getting. The quality of those applicants, um, there is an attraction to bigger departments for younger officers. They are looking for a little bit of need for speed, they wanna go be Superman and wanna go have a lot of action. That's not the image we portray. Some people are looking for departments that are big because there's all kinds of career options. You'll notice that a lot of the candidates that we've hired over the years have been more mature candidates, even if they haven't been officers for the, for a long time, cause they're streetwise. They've been around the block a few times and they know what they're looking for. So we tend to have a certain number of candidates that, limited pool we get. And then we also have people, I'll be blunt, we have people that can't get a job anyplace else and they're hoping they're a small town and we won't look too close at their history. And so that makes up part of that number. So we have a little bit more challenge than some of the larger departments in recruitment as well. We have a couple of advantages. Geographically, we're in the metro area, that's a desirable location. We pay competitively relative to our size and relative to our geography. So we do well from that standpoint, but we tend to find that our best candidates really are looking for a specific type of community in a specific geography. And that's just not a huge swath of candidates. When we talk to them, it's like, we have other applications out, it's like St. Paul, where do you wanna work? I wanna work here, but St. Paul's my, I can't get any other job, job, you know. And so, um, I think it really depends on the applicant pool. There are things we can do. So if you wanna, if you know you wanna have somebody the first of the year, knowing that sometimes it takes us multiple times, you could say, okay, post now, knowing that if we find somebody out of the first round, we'll hire them early. That would be a way to get them on board sooner.
Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, no, I mean, kind of along those same lines here, beating this one a bit, but, you know, taking in the development stuff, I, I would just hate to wait until we get the results of next year's one to make a decision knowing that it's gonna be another six months or so if you're able to. So somehow weighing that into it, which you said you make sure that we're gonna do. And we haven't gone through a bunch of stuff yet, so I mean, if you want to have something at the end of fiscal year next year to have something where we go based on where our projected development, that kind of stuff, so to be.
Noticing that you used a full 12-month period, couldn't you do this every six months or three months to see a trajectory?
You can, but police work like anything else is, it's a unknown equation. We statistically are down in calls, but that allows us to be up in officer initiated activity. Any given year, uh, you can just have a spurt of crime. We are experiencing a population growth of children. As we know, juveniles generate a lot of calls for a police department. So I'm kind of watching population wise, I didn't even bring up that study, but it's in my formula here. We're at one officer per 870 people, which on, that's another ratio that's looked at. It depends on where you're at. Sometimes it's, we have 1.4 officers and, you know, sometimes we're under one officer per thousand. We're sitting well there.
But how many of those, so maybe to the kid's point, how many of those, what's the breakdown of?
So, um, Renee gave me a lot of population. 30% of our population right now is under 20 years old. So,
And those, and I, and I would suspect those are getting to that age too, where they're getting pulled over in our neighborhood in golf carts or different things like that. They're getting to the age of 15% or risk-taking or whatever.
15% of that are under 10. So I guess if you trust me, I won't let us get behind. I'll let you know, but I do think there's dire consequences of having too much staff in relationship to our budget. And, um, we, another huge thing, we have quality staff. And I'm not just, I just got here, but in the three months that I've seen this officer generated, we don't have lazy staff. We don't have staff that doesn't wanna do anything. And let me tell you, I've come from enough departments where that's not always the case. And you've seen it, you've, you've seen it at TV, we've all worked with those people at different departments. There's departments where they have people who are retired on duty, they're not doing that. We don't have that case. So I think we have quality staff that's working harder than the numbers we have. And, um, and that's a product of who they are. I won't let us get down, but I think that through kind of my recruiting that I do, my mentoring, I always have numbers, um, stealing from other departments, you know, people that I've worked with and trained with before. I'll, we'll try to eliminate that, that gap from when we authorize. But it's the other stuff we can't, you know, if we have an officer get injured or if we have an officer go on a maternity or a paternity leave. You know, those things are tough. And you'll know, cause we're so, such a close family here as a community, as a council, as a staff, you know, when that happens and I'll, and I'll come to you, but. When that happens and I'll and I'll come to you, but we also have great part-time staff that are willing to step up. And they're willing to work more and it's more just the money for the budget, you know, and get, so between all that, I think we'll be fine. Uh, at least a year out and possibly longer.
Well, if you do your, this again, June next year, that gives us, you see, you know, by twenty twenty one, okay, we're going to start the budget for twenty twenty one. We can slip it in there and we can start the process.
That is what I'm, I can't say that because, you know, I came across when I'm doing these staffing studies in oh nine. They said by twenty twenty, next year, we'd have eleven staff on the police department. Chief, nine officers, a school resource officer, clerical staff and a detective. And so it's ten or eleven, yeah. So they, because they were forecasting before the crash, where our population would be, where our budget would be. In fifteen, twenty fifteen, they, that same estimate had us at eight staff, so more than we are now. So I I'm saying, we're, we're, there's no formula you can apply to how quick we're going to grow or how our staff is going to need. Um, if we have a large industry component come in, that's going to demand a lot more of our services. So if we have big developments come up, that's going to demand a lot more of our services. And you're always reacting. You can never be too proactive because you don't want too many staff around yourself.
Anyone else have questions for Rich?
I have a comment more than a question. So if we need, in your estimation, if we need two staff to get to a point where we're a hundred percent staffed.
Twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
And we're not going to consider another officer for two fiscal years, for the second fiscal year at a minimum. That means that we're probably, and and we go at that rate, we're we're really four years away from three to four years, if we go at an officer per year and officer every two years, away from that fully staffed level. And that's not factoring in growth. So now if we add the apartment complex and the second part of the apartment complex comes on. And we add all these subdivisions that we're working on right now, and we have that growth, now we're going to need even more in four years. Wouldn't it be better to be proactive and at least budget maybe a half of a year next year for a police officer? And start that process early in the year rather than late in the year?
I think we should, that's, I mean, we're going to be getting into budgeting next meeting.
Yeah, so the next council meeting we have will be, um, budget parameters and rules. Probably gets the toy box and what we want to put in it.
So I would suggest we, I'm not trying to dismiss your suggestion, but it's just, we've been that a better, I mean, when we start doing that, because that's kind of a start.
Yeah, but I mean, we're talking about now.
Yeah, I'm forecasting staff. I'm forecasting staff. It doesn't mean we only have to hire one at a time. If in twenty twenty-three, we think, oh, my gosh, we're, now I'm coming to you going, listen, we've experienced explosive growth. We can take our part timers and work them more. We can add part timers. We could add two police officers at once. Um, for, you know, for the, to make up for that. I just, with our history and our projected history, our growth is so studied. And so, um, I don't want to say slow because it's it's good growth, but it's predictable. That we know a development of a hundred and fifty homes is coming in, that's going to bring in four hundred people, estimated two point three people per home. We know that six months in advance. We know this apartment complex that's coming up. I'm not suggesting we wait until we get pounded before we do it. I'm just saying, let's measure our growth with our growth of the city. And projection, if a big subdivision comes in of three hundred homes, I'm going to be going, council. I think right now is the time we should hire that one officer because we're going to grow a thousand people in six, eight months. So I, that's why I come to all those meetings too, or these planning meetings. A lot of chiefs don't do that. That's where you find out about your city and your community and how fast it's growing. That's why I sit in on those. That's why I participate in all those engineering things because it's interesting, but it's also forecasting. So I think with Renee's help, Tom's help, your help, I think we'll just, we'll grow and we'll keep that that equation the same. I don't think we'll have this where this and we're still down here. I think we'll be able to, because it doesn't happen overnight. The the growth happens.
Well, and and you don't want, you don't want a budget to jump two officers in a year either because now you're making a major budget impact. Versus if you had, you know, if it's if it's an offer, half of an officer this year, that that then that that jump isn't going to be as much at that one point in time.
But I I think we can absorb a heavy with all that officer activity. And and that's kind of where I'm going at is we're staffed so well that we'll be able to absorb those impacts. And where we won't just be so far behind. And things like a huge industrial park, in one year, you might get three hundred thousand dollars worth of permits and waters and everything like that to where your budget could accommodate another officer, public works or, you know, where, you know, that type of growth, like what we saw at Chaska in the last ten years, we grew fourteen thousand people, you know, the budget grew with it and so did the staff. I think we won't be behind. And I see your concern. I think we can stay ahead of the curve. And that's why I'm saying, trust me, I think right now we're good. And with that twenty-four seven coverage, we could do it now if you wanted to open up the budget for overtime. Do you know what I'm saying? We're trying to do it responsibly. I could just simply make a mandate that when an officer is not working, an officer will be working. So if you're sick, day guy covers later, night guy comes in earlier, you know, and you cover it with overtime. It's just, I don't think I need that. And also, we have an incredible sheriff's department. Their response times are long, but they're awesome. And you know what? When we have a crime and we need an investigator, we call them. They're there. So they're our backup and they are there, you know, it's not like there's no one there. And the gap is going to be smaller when we need them. And, but I'm saying if if you make that commitment to a twenty-four seven, it's just a lot of budget. We could do it with our staff now, but it's just overtime budget. That's what gets officers tired and they're working more and then they don't feel as proactive and don't want to do as many proactive things, so. I hear what you're saying and the budgeting is your side of it. I would have no objection if you wanted to say, if you said hire another, I'll take one. But I'm just saying, I won't turn staff down, but I'm just saying, uh, the budgeting and how we get there, that's your, that's not my forte.
Appreciate that. Anyone else have questions?
I think you've heard a lot of it there. We got your back, so.
Yeah, and I yours. And any, you know, a lot of people have been calling, asking questions, emailing, whatever I can do, let me know. But thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Brady.
Brady.
That's the first time I've done that.
All right, assuming there's nothing for the fire department from us.
Um, just a quick update. We have some candidates. We have three candidates that we identified under our last call that we will afford. Um, they're been brought on board. They'll start their training in August. And hopefully they'll make it through their training certification and we get to keep them.
Engineering.
A couple of things. Um, we talked about the roundabout trails a little bit and just a clarification. You may recall, we discussed when Derek was here about the idea of possibly bidding the trails and then deciding at that point whether to keep them in. And we advised that that might muck up the bidding because it's similar, worked with it. So that was a valid reason to not think about doing that. There's also a technical reason that because of the geography, the length of those trails, we have to make an amendment to the grant program in this, uh, the the, um, rules, then if you make that amendment, you have to do that work. If you would decide to take that work out at the last minute, you have to go through a process to reamend it, which kind of blows your schedule. So just a nuance that wasn't made clear, but, uh, if you're in on the trails at this point, we've made that amendment, you're kind of in on the trails. I don't know that that's a problem. I think everybody agrees that it makes sense, but, um, so there's that. We also have scheduled and published for tonight your annual stormwater meeting. This is a requirement of your MS four permit. Uh, municipal separated storm sewer system is MS four. And that program has certain requirements, uh, for minimum control measures and B M P's best management practices that you've adopted. We, uh, observe and apply. One of those requirements is that you have an annual stormwater meeting to go over the status of the program, provide educational outreach opportunity. So we have to have this meeting. Uh, we do not have to go through the presentation if you don't wish to. I see no apparent, uh, persons interested. I don't know if, I don't know if the, um.
No, Patrick's sitting on the end of his chair.
I prefer none. Who wants anyone else?
I, yeah, I'd prefer him to be.
So for the cameras, any members of the public interested in this information, we'd be happy to provide it, uh, by email or during phone call or however they would like to contact, if that's an agreeable approach. And then we can, uh, just skip over this.
That was awesome.
All right.
Thanks.
Any questions for Rich? Nope, all right. Any development?
I don't have any updates. I'll give them to what Tom is probably going to issue.
Any questions for Renee? Parks, any update beyond what was provided? C C E C.
Okay, so if.
I swear I saw you walk into a meeting.
That was our last meeting, but.
Everything's going good there, I guess.
At the last council meeting, so.
Oh.
That's what I meant, I guess. Yeah, everything's good. It was just going over fire rescue days, that's it.
And twelve thirty is the time to be here, right?
No.
Was it twelve? Okay.
Yeah, I I just sent out an email today. It basically said, be here by this time to get prepped to get on the float.
Right.
What, for council, so.
So clarification, now it's ending at Wagner Park. Can we still get a ride back to our cars?
That was also an email. Um, so if you plan to stay at Wagner Park and mingle and hang out, that's great. Um, if you want to come back, you can probably just stay on the float and Le, Andrew will just get you back. Um.
Or is he just planning on zipping back to his house?
Uh, Mark had told me that they would find you a way back one way or another, probably on the float, but we'll get you back one way or the other.
And I should probably add too, Mark said if anybody wants to stay, there's plenty of help that probably could be needed at the park, so.
Um, one of the big things we need is somebody to watch the entrances to the policy houses. It's a good opportunity to just, you can chat with mom and dad while the kids are bouncing around.
Okay, I did that a year or so ago. It was fun.
Are you doing the balloon toss at the mayor?
I would love to, but was told not, I told I can't.
Yeah, it's a liability. We can't let Joe get hurt.
I was, I might be encouraging people to still throw water balloons at me, so.
Then, yeah, that'd be at your expense.
That would be all for it.
Yeah, we can.
That's a dunk, not drunk.
Yeah.
Often one of the same.
Yes.
I mean, it could be alcohol beverages inside of it that Joe could consume, maybe?
Yeah, insurance said no, yeah. Sorry, Joe.
Okay, other board reports, starting with scale, um. What's that?
I thought it was an interesting meeting.
Yeah, it, you know, real quickly, I won't go in too much detail, but the, at the last scale meeting, um, broke up everybody into different groups, uh, just to get some different feedback on, you know, different, not necessarily different priorities, but, uh, different, different things that people would like to see within scale. Um, I don't have a comprehensive report or anything because we haven't gotten together to review all the results and information yet. And so that's something I'm really excited to do. Uh, a few of us are getting together from the exec team on July twelfth to go over all that. So I'm looking forward to coming back to this council with kind of what a lot of the feedback was at that time, so. And Tom, you were there. I don't know if you wanted to add anything or.
No, I thought it was.
Josh, Kate.
I thought it was.
John, you were, you weren't at the second one, were you?
No, I was in the second one.
That's right.
The scale meeting is always pretty interesting.
Yeah, yeah, they can be.
Yeah.
Uh, M V T A?
Um, I actually did not attend, but, um, Haley did in my place. And the big thing was that they just launched their new connect app. So you can download that and use it. It sounds like it's got some bugs to it, but it was kind of the big thing, so.
I thirty-five.
Hmm, it'll be on the eleventh? Or, yeah, because we're doing this one, we can't see in August, so I think that's what they said.
Yeah, I I attended the technical meeting following it, so they're going through their periodic um, process where they identify their top priority projects that they're going to push for lobbying for, basically, you typically funding. And getting it moved up to priority with the legislature or MINDOC or whoever, or TAB, whoever they need to. Um, that will be an important, um, for us because of course we feel that the interchange is an important item and we need to start getting it on some of these doc, somewhere on the list. And it's been on their document in the past. Um, it just hasn't been one of the top priorities. I think for us, the big issue is that we're competing with things like the I thirty-five, four ninety-four interchange and other big regional projects. Um, but I think we still need to get it under, even if all we're doing is we're getting them to push for it and getting into the long-term planning documents for the regional and state agencies at this point. So Josh's role will be as the the voting member to lobby for it. And my job will be to make a case for it with the technical committee that it has merit relative to other items. Um, but that will probably be one of the biggest things for, uh, over the next several months, so.
And I think it'd be interesting to see, you know, which, how it is prioritized or weighted against some of the other ones that might have a direct impact on us, like the Lakeville stuff or adding, you know, where do we view that as a council as the priority? I mean, and I guess I don't know how that process works, you know, how you vote for different things to get them on their top three or whatever you end up doing, you know, do we kick off something that has an upstream effect on us, like a Lakeville to get our interchange? Or do, you know, we should talk about that once we start seeing closer.
So the consultant that they retained is, um, S R F. And what they'll do is they go through, it's the same process they've used two previous times where there's a scale and weighting based on a number of factors and they'll come out with a weighting. That's not the final list, but it gives kind of a starting point then for the policy discussion because there's always extra nuances to it. And, um, so while I can make sure that we're not unfairly scored through the process, um, once you get to the point where you're talking the nuances, that would be Josh's role then to, you know, point out what our situation is and how our project might stack against some of those other projects.
All right. Uh, Chamber Commerce, that that was, that report was provided via email, which, just before the meeting, so. We don't have anyone here to ask questions to, and I'm not going to do that to you, Kate, so. Uh, on to discussion by council. I have one thing, but if someone else has something, they can certainly go first. Wanted to float the idea of, um, potentially moving meeting times permanently. And if it doesn't work for anyone's schedule, then we can certainly leave them as is, but personally like the idea of getting out of here sooner rather than later. And I was thinking, rather than starting workshops at six thirty, maybe we just move that up to six and then the business meeting at seven. Is that, how does everybody feel about that?
I'd be all for it. What about, John, what about you? Like with work or Josh?
I put them on my schedule and so whatever the time is, the time is and I work everything around it, so.
What do we be?
Josh, you have sometimes.
Would be inconvenient?
I mean, if I'm late to the workshop, I'll be late to the workshop, I suppose.
No, I.
I, I, no, I mean, it doesn't seem like it would have come into effect recently or anything like that. And five thirty, you know, we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. Five thirty seems to be about the breakpoint by the time I'm coming from St. Louis Park down here, um, from work, so.
So it would.
I mean, I think six o'clock would work.
Okay. All right, so Tom will, our staff will work on, I think, do we have to pass a resolution or something on that next meeting?
We we will, so we'll work on that. One other item I did want to maybe piggyback on Joe's item. Is the council okay with the idea that if we don't have a work session item, that we just automatically move the business item up?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, we've been doing it in practice and I'll be honest, up until. Uh, we've been doing it in practice, and I'll be honest, up until the last six months or so, that was a very rare occurrence, but I think just because of the nature of the items that are coming through. It's becoming more frequent, and it might just be a cyclical thing, but I just want to make sure that the council's okay with doing that before we just start making the regular assumption.
So I mean, like the eleventh, I want, want to say we want to start it then, because we have a five-thirty meeting, it's supposed to take an hour, and I couldn't be there at five, so.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other further discussion by council?
Just one little thing, um, I was assigned to the Unified Transit Management.
Yep.
Committee, um, they'll be kicking that off soon, they did a due diligence, set, set a date, but. Should be, should be coming up, um, probably mid-July.
Well, I, I've been on the government's workforce development board for two years now, and I haven't really given any updates, so if you guys want updates, I am on there as a city council person, but I put on various hats depending on what the conversation's about.
Do you feel there's a, an update for our city?
Not right now, I'll, I'll look for the next one, I'll, I'll put something together, but I just thought about, as you said, that I've been doing it for two years, and I rarely give updates on it, and there's going to be, I mean, some good stuff, so.
Yeah, I, you know, my personal thoughts, I mean, if, with all the different committees that people serve on, uh, no one feels obligated to give a report. Unless there's something that's relevant to give, otherwise, I personally trust the ones doing everything in the best interest of the city, but. Uh, is anyone, would like, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Seepers.
Second.
Second by Schrittenberg, go in favor.
Bye.
Bye.